I call the-
Oh, wait, wait, wait. I gotta get it. Now.
Okay. Call the meeting of the Yelm Planning Commission to order today is Monday, August 19, 2019, and time is 4:06 PM as the staff take in roll.
John Graver?
Here.
John Thompson?
Here.
Jerry Fugich?
Here.
Floyd Chilton?
Here.
Bob Howard?
Here.
I have an email from Ann Warman that she is out of state on her, well, on her way back from being out of state and requested to be excused.
I make a motion to be excused. Ann War-
I would second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both? Motion carried. Now we all stand for pleasurable allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As everybody had a chance to review the agenda for today's meeting.
Yes.
Now I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carried. Have the minutes here, and as soon as we get a, people have reviewed it, then we'll need a motion to approve the minutes as printed.
I make a motion to be approved?
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both? Motion carried. The minutes have been approved. Public communications?
I've received none.
Okay. Public hearings?
None on the schedule today.
Okay. Old business? Do we have any old business?
Well, old business, old business, pardon me, old business would be going over the Unified Development Code update that we started discussing at the last meeting. So if you are okay, I'll just jump in.
Okay.
Okay. So, first of all, I want to apologize for throwing some ideas at you last meeting about Unified Development Code updates such as density increases, parking, looking at changing parking and setbacks and so forth, out of the blue. It was given to you without more context needed, and since that meeting, I've kind of gone back and I've done a lot of research and gone back to city council members who have asked that we look at this and clarified a little bit on what we should do. So I'd like to go over that with you, but first, I want to thank you Floyd for being astute in knowing that what that blank or that huge question was, how we couldn't respond to it just without a lot of information and detail. And that kind of prompts where I went with looking at density increases, affordable housing, low-income housing and so forth. There's a couple different things, and where the confusion lies, at least in with myself and working with a couple others, was we have the need for affordable housing, but are we looking at affordable housing or low-income and subsidized housing? They're very different, very different items. There's an affordable housing crisis in the world, and it encompasses all of those. However, in the city of Yelm, what are some ways that we can look at addressing this? In order to look at an overall, do we need to increase density within the citywide? Do we need, you know, what are things we can do to address the affordable housing? You hit the nail on the head in that we can't just, out of the blue, start throwing numbers out there without knowing the background information. And it goes deeper than just going into our comp plan and looking at population projections and housing needs and housing forecasts that were done several years ago. It's four or five years old, and it's sorely out of date. Also, looking at what the needs of the city are, what are our vacancy rates? How many units do we have? You know, there's just so much information that you would want to move forward with maybe an affordable housing task force or affordable housing action strategy. These are a couple reports that were done in other cities. Consultants are hired, they do that background information, they get that kind of data that I am unable to do. I don't have the time nor the expertise to pull that for you, to be able to look, and then... So that was one, one part of that. That's something that maybe the city will go to in the future, but that's not what the planning commission will be doing this year in looking at Unified Development Code. There's other ways to go too, to help with affordable housing, but more in the low-income and subsidized housing, and that is there's the House Bill 1406, which allows cities to receive tax dollars to go towards affordable housing. It's something brand new, and the details on that isn't even worked out yet, but there is a way to receive state tax funds without taxing, without increasing the tax rate to your residents, but receive some of that funding that cities can use for affordable housing, purchasing, refurbishing and so forth. The problem with that in the city of Yelm is you would actually need to have a program that has or manages affordable housing, and we don't have that yet, and that wouldn't come until we actually did a housing task force study. There's also ways to reduce impact fees or waive impact fees if a developer chooses to provide, you know, a certain number of units to be low-income units. That gets into what constitutes low income. Once he does, they do, say, an apartment complex and 20% need to be low-income. There's, we could use these tax funds for that, we could waive some impact fees for that, but who follows up on this? Who makes sure those units, you know, are set aside? And who manages those units? And how do we know that five, 10, 15 years from now, those units are still being managed as low-income? That's through, say, Thurston County Housing Authority, or, you know, some cities have their own. So that's a bigger picture that we're not going to delve into at this time. We'll wait and see if that's the way the city wants to move forward, start that task force study and move from there. So I just wanted to clarify that that's not what we're going to be looking at. We're going to be looking at how can the, is there anything that we can do to help achieve or reach that affordable housing? City of Olympia calls it the missing middle. You have plenty of houses that are going for market rate, but there's a lot of families or single persons that can't afford the market rate housing, yet they don't quite qualify for low-income or subsidized. So it's that missing middle. How can we get some more affordable units? That's what prompted this conversation, and there's different things that we can do and that I hope the planning commission will be willing to look at as part of the Unified Code, or Unified Development Code update, and that is with the subcommittee, let's look at what we offer now. We do offer a lot of ways for developers to achieve additional housing. We have, I actually started writing it down at some point, we have, our low-density zone allows duplexes, townhomes, residential developments. You can do duplexes, multi, you know, multifamily in our residential zones already. It allows for a variety of type of housing. Our planned residential development zoning actually allows us to defer or make exempt a lot of our development regulations, such as the size of streets, building setbacks, how the project is laid out, if they go above and beyond and make it a true mixed development. So, you know, just very simply, you have five acres and you do some duplexes, maybe a couple fourplexes, and the rest, single-family housing. That would provide that variety of housing. It would be a planned residential development. And in doing so, let's look at, could we do townhouses with zero lot lines? Could we do, instead of building public streets in front of every single one of those homes, could we do private streets or cul-de-sacs or smaller one-way streets within that division to be able to achieve that density and use up the land? As it is, sometimes through our single-family residential development, the developers choose not to achieve the entire density they could get in that, in that zone because they want bigger lots and they want to build larger houses because that achieves a better return for them. So if we require some small lots and some large lots, that way we'd have some smaller housing. Secondary dwelling units are another way to achieve some affordable housing for, you know, college students that just need a room, a small house. However, with our small lots, it's really impossible to achieve a secondary dwelling unit unless you're going to convert your garage. You can't get another unit on there because it doesn't meet setbacks. Could we look at a reduction in setbacks for a secondary dwelling unit in some of our residential zones? There's, we already have a reduction in our, they're not impact fees, our system development charges. If you build four or more units, multifamily units, you have a reduction in your water connection fees and your sewer connection fees. You have a reduction in your transportation impact fees. So there's a lot of things that we have on the books already. Another one is in our low-density R4 zone, you can build duplexes and get up to six units per acre if you build duplexes within the R4 zone. So we have a lot of these things on the books. What we're trying to figure out is what do we offer now? What is, what are the barriers that developers are finding to not achieve this? Is there some ways that we can look at find, making it easier for them? Such as maybe a density bonus if they do the planned residential development? Maybe if they don't have for multifamily, reducing some of the parking standards, because a lot of times in multifamily apartment dwelling, they don't necessarily have two vehicles, or they might be a single person with just one vehicle. Or if it's in the downtown area and on a bus route, give them a reduction in parking requirements because they're on a bus route and have that opportunity. So trying to figure out what some of the barriers are, how can we encourage development to meet the density that we have, and is there a reason to look at increased density? The setbacks in parking space on the type of, this type of development? How can we encourage getting that missing middle in the city without going through the big, before we go through the big? What can we do now to help that out? That's really where the direction we were asked to go. It wasn't clear in my mind, and it wasn't at the time when I was to bring it to you. So that's what I'm hoping the subcommittee can take a look at. What do we have? What can we, you know, what are, what are the incentives that we already offer? What are the barriers in getting it done? And is there any way through our development code that we could incentivize that kind of building? And it may be that we don't change anything. It may be we have everything on the books now and nothing needs to be changed, but just having that look over this year while the development code is open and just seeing if there's any changes that could be a possibility. That's kind of where we, where we need to go with that. One of the things I forgot to say is along with looking at what do we have, what are the barriers, what are some incentives, but what is the ripple effect? When we start increasing density in the city, we've got to go back to our comp plan and make sure that, you know, our population forecasts are correct. We need to go to our capital facilities plans and make sure that we're planning ahead, that we're not overburdering, overburdening our water, our sewer and our streets, because right now, all of those improvements and all of those system plans, planning for the future, are based on the zoning and density that we've forecasted as of today. So if we start messing around with density, we're going to start messing around with a bunch of other things too. So with that, we had chosen the members for the subcommittee to kind of look at that. If that helps clarify where we're going, we could schedule that subcommittee meeting and kind of talk about some of these things in the subcommittee meeting, get a little down and dirty with some of that, and then come back with more ideas and recommendations for the full commission to look at.
One of the things, kind of my job I've worked at for several years, and they were looking at to be able to continue houses being affordable housing. And one of the things they had looked at, Bainbridge Island used land trusts, and because of that, then the houses would be then recycled. When they did sell, it would give certain amount back to the homeowner, then would stay as affordable housing. That was Bainbridge Island did that. It was a land trust program.
Kitsap County has, in many of their cities, Pulse Bow and some others, yeah, they've got some really good housing strategies that they're working on. There is a lot of options out there, and I think that we can get there, but as a small city and growing, we haven't had the staff, the money, you know, to pull it all together. It's, it's going to happen, so we're going to have to prepare for that. But again, that's not something that we're going to fix in our Unified Development Code. Increasing density doesn't create affordable housing.
Yeah.
You know, we need the developers, we need the builders to come in and find ways to get there, so.
So you've got the, Theresa?
I do. Ann Warman, when she emailed back to remind us that she wasn't going to be here, she was one of the three with Floyd and Carlos to be on the subcommittee, and she's available between 10 and 3, anywhere from August 20th, tomorrow, through August 28th, and then again after the Labor Day weekend. So I have the calendar here, and Carlos isn't here, but I can certainly email him. Floyd, if there's some, any of those days, it may or may not work better for you. I can rearrange my schedule very easily. I'm thinking, you know, maybe, maybe from 1 to 3, and just kind of go over some of these items, or if you'd like, before lunch, you know, meet at 10, and that way you have the rest of the afternoon to do what you need to do. I think Floyd, you're the only one that has to check in on a clock, but we're clocked, so. If you, if you would like to email me a couple dates, then I can do a broadcast email to you and Carlos and Ann and say, here's some dates that we can meet, and if you'll let me know your availability, we can do that. And then we can dive in a little bit further, kind of talk out some of the issues, and then come back at the next meeting. It'd be great if we could do it before the holiday weekend. Coming in after the holiday weekend, it doesn't give me time to put together information to get back to you before your meeting, I believe, which is on the 16th. The 16th of September.
You can let me the date, not just, that way I can put it on my calendar, even though I'm not part of the committee.
Sure.
Just, do I?
Sure. I can do planning commission members and then just-
Yeah. Because it's only, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other old business? Any other old business? Any other old business? You do this three times. Hearing that, any other business? Yes.
I recently had a visit from Washington State DOT to my property, and the reason they came, it has to do with our bypass. And they approached me because one of the things that they're up against to get this bypass to take place, they have to come up with a habitat conservancy plan of their own to meet the federal U.S. Fish and Wildlife standards and requirements. And basically, they have to come up with 25 acres to set aside and somehow convince these pocket gophers and any other endangered species to go live on this designated 25-
I'll be happy to call them there.
Yeah.
It's not a problem.
So anyway, what's prompted me to bring up the subject, you know, involved me on my own property, and knowing what I know with Thurston County. Thurston County has for almost a year submitted a proposal for a conservancy plan, but U.S. Fish is very, very slow in responding back. So the question in my mind comes up, does Yelm have a plan in place or are they exempt? And what's triggered the question is with the recent thing I seen in the paper about approving the water for development down between Mountain View Road and Killian Road with 118 units, that ground down there is no different than most grounds soils around Yelm. I had to do a study of my own property, and what I learned was most of Yelm soils down to depths greater than two feet deep are what they call spanaway gravelly soils. They can vary from 3 to 15 percent, large rock, small rock, it could be spanaway sandy loam. Well, the common denominator, all up and down where they want to run the bypass, both sides of that bypass, that's what all the ground is, okay? And in looking further, I also have a little access in my business, so I pulled up to see what that acreage down there might have, and it's all the same kind of ground. So that's what's prompted the question. Does Yelm have something in place or are they exempt? Do they have to provide information? How does a contractor get around it, or do they have to play by all the other standards? I just don't know, and that's why I'm asking.
A lot of questions, but I think I can answer them.
Okay.
You are correct. Most of, most of the city Yelm, city of Yelm is preferred soils for the pocket gopher.
Right.
So without a habitat conservation plan, which we do not have at this time, what we do until we have a habitat conservation plan is to review each property at the time of permit application individually. So some of the properties in town that are redeveloping, it's easy for me to go out and take a look and say, this is all gravel, there's, there's no evidence of pocket gophers. I'm pretty confident that there are none. In the case of the Hutch and other properties in the city, what we have them do is, at this point, until we have our own habitat conservation plan, is do a preliminary review where they have to have a biologist or a geologist go out, an expert, go out and review the site, and they walk it and traverse the entire thing to see if there's evidence. The evidence is they can tell the difference between the mole hill and the pocket gopher hill, and they can tell some of them that are, looks like they're, were there, maybe aren't active. If there's any evidence whatsoever of gophers, then they need to do the full study that Fish and Wildlife proposed, which is the June, the October, you know, so forth. In the development applications that we've received, I've had two or three come in with no evidence, and there is a piece of property that was coming in for an application that had evidence of gophers, so they have to go through the Fish and Wildlife recommended study area. In the meantime, the city has, we've just applied to U.S., or Washington, with Washington Fish and Wildlife to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife for grant funds to do our own habitat, habitat conservation plan. So we will go through what Tom Water did, what Thurston is still in the middle of doing in trying to make sure that we can have this habitat conservation plan. We're hoping to make sure that we have property large enough that when the plan is complete and finished, that it covers citywide, so that it doesn't matter where you are in the city, you would be part of our habitat conservation plan. However that ends up, I don't know. Usually, it's if you have a piece of property, you're going to pay a certain amount of money to go to keep the habitat, the habitat conservation area preserved for the gophers, and whatever other species that are listed or priority, that could be benefited from that. There's one, one last thing. Darn, I forgot. You asked one other thing.
Well, right now, it's up to the contractor to mitigate the rule.
At this point, yes. So we're getting, oh, I don't, I don't remember what it was I was going to respond to. Oh, that, no, that wasn't it either. There was one other thing, but we're working on it, so that hopefully it will be citywide and we'll get it taken care of.
The biggest-
Now, DOT is having to deal with, oh, I know what it was. So when you have the property set aside for that, for the gophers and whatever other species are there, it's not that you're going to encourage the ones from this property to move over there. You're preserving land for that, where that species can thrive. So I don't know in great detail exactly how it works, but, you know, a federally listed or an endangered species, if you go in and develop and you, you know, you've lost their habitat, it's a taking. So instead of a taking, if you're going somewhere that's going to destroy habitat where they may be, then you're providing other habitat to preserve it. And that's basically what, what Tom Water has done. Thurston County is almost there, they've been working on it. The wonderful thing about coming in after the fact, like we did with some other, with the wireless communication facility, is a lot of the hard work has been done. We can pull from that and then use it and deal with what we have out here and how can we make it work out here. So yes, we are on our way, but it's, it's a long, arduous process.
So that means a builder, contractor, owner of the citizen, that wants to build, they would have to go through due process then, basically, before they could actually get a permit?
Yes.
I'm waiting 27 months for a damn permit, and so I'm getting a little bit frustrated, and I've even arranged a meeting down there.
Right.
It's high up at Gary Edwards' office, and I basically, it's sort of, no, I felt like I was being discriminated on. And nobody will do anything, and then that's when they explained to me, they have a plan in place and they're trying to find a way to do it, but U.S. Fish is just going to push it off to the side because they supposedly have bigger priorities. So, anyway, I just want to make sure for the city of Yelm, we got to, so we're not over the liability or issues, that's why I bring it up.
We, we don't have it in place, we are working on getting it in place, and until such time, we just deal with individual properties and at the time of development, not, not before. Yeah. I hope that answers your questions.
It helps.
Any other new business? Any other new business? Any other new business? Hearing that, move on to, um, subcommittee reports. Any subcommittee report? Yes, go ahead.
No, that was one.
Oh. I'm sure glad this is a comment, I, it makes me feel good to go by and see how that park is being used.
Oh, water.
Yep.
And I went to the ocean, and there's one in Oakham, and it's the same way. So I don't care what people complain about, it's being used, and that's what we want.
Picnic extermination out there.
Yeah.
What's that?
I saw picnics out there Sunday.
Yeah.
I was there with my grandkids on Sunday.
Yeah.
Go by, coming back from doing my job.
Yeah. No, it's, it's been wonderful and all, since it's opened. No, it's, it's been wonderful and all, since it's opened, being, you know, just across, we can just look out there and kids are...
You can run over there lunchtime and run through.
And put my feet in, yeah. No, it's, it's done very well.
Now, the chamber, um, it wasn't brought up by the whole group, but a lot of the group said, why isn't there like an adult time?
It's from midnight till...
Oh, that's what it is, yeah. And a subcommittee.
Okay.
Now, I would entertain a motion to adjourn if we have nothing else.
I make a motion to adjourn?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carried.